Lansing City Council Meeting for May seventeenth is called to order at seven o'clock PM. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar.
President, participating remotely from Port Austin, Michigan.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Garza.
I'm present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
This is Spatafor, he's in the other arena and hasn't been brought over.
Oh, okay, one moment, just a second, there he is. He is, call him again, please, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein.
I was starting to get a little offended, no, I'm just kidding.
You should have felt lucky.
Councilmember Hussein, where are you participating from?
Sorry, present, participating remotely from South Lansing.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
President, participating remotely from Lansing.
Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, and Councilmember Wood.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, we have eight members present in our quorum, and no members are absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, is there anyone that the council wishes for us to keep in our thoughts this evening as we pass eight o'clock? Mr. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, just keeping our thoughts and prayers to family and friends of Timothy Minor and Keon Miller II. Those were the two young men that were unfortunately killed yesterday due to gun violence in Lansing.
Thank you, Councilmember, we're asking the Minor and Miller families be in your thoughts this evening as we pause for reflection. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For your approval, the council proceedings of May third and May tenth.
Vice President.
Sure, I would move the printed council proceedings for May third and May tenth as presented.
Proper motion before us, would the clerk, any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
The proceedings, Councilmember, who's, uh, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, um, the proceedings are approved, and we are to comments by councilmembers and city clerk.
There, okay, uh, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to give an announcement about the southeast Lansing team up to cleanup, which is June twenty-third. It's gonna be approximately from one thirty to three thirty PM. It's hosted by the South Lansing Business Association, it's a team, uh, team up to clean up effort. Uh, who, anyone interested in making a difference in the southeast Lansing community? Children may attend, but with their parents. Uh, what beautify one half square mile of southeast Lansing, I ninety-six Cedar Street, Jolly in Pennsylvania. They're meeting at Saint Michael's Episcopal Church, sixty-five hundred Amwood Drive between Menards and Target. Once again, that's Wednesday, June twenty-third, from one thirty to three thirty PM. If you're interested, please email Suzie Carter at info at S L B A dot biz. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I want to, I want to publicly express, um, first and foremost, my appreciation for the, I don't know, maybe sixty volunteers that came out this past Saturday. Um, to help really not just clean up, but, uh, we engaged in a number of beautification projects, um, that impacted really large swaths of, uh, South Waverly, West Miller. Uh, we were on Sheffield Boulevard, Boulevard, sorry, um, on Glenburn, uh, and, and so really, um, it was, I mean, a substantial portion of southwest Lansing. I want to thank, um, specifically the coach-like Commons Neighborhood, as well as Lansing Eaton Neighborhood Organization, um, Avery Woods and, um, who else do we have? Uh, Churchill Downs, sorry, uh, for putting that together in conjunction with our Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement Director, uh, Delisa Fontaine. Um, you know, it was, it was incredible to see that many people committed to, to giving folks, um, in that area something that, uh, you know, some spaces that they could essentially be proud of. The, the other piece is, uh, oh, and, and I'd be remiss to, we had a number of city employees out. Um, we had, uh, Chief Odom was out, uh, we had Director Coleman, uh, we had Councilwoman Spitzley showed up. Uh, Parks Director Brett Koshinsky, there was just a number of folks, uh, so thanks again for all of the hard work, uh, it certainly, uh, is appreciated. Um, to, to that end, in terms of community, uh, beautification, uh, there is also another opportunity this Saturday. Uh, and this is actually being organized by the Southwest Action Group, uh, and its president, Rachel White. Uh, and so this would be at, uh, nine AM, we're going, going to be meeting, sorry, at thirty-four, thirty-four Pleasant Grove. That's actually the site of the new southwest town square. Uh, the hyper-focus is Pleasant Grove and Homes, um, kind of the business district. Um, however, if we, uh, secure enough volunteers, we're hoping, um, to, uh, tackle a number of other projects, particularly in the Pleasant View neighborhood. So you think of Hillcrest, you think of, uh, Feral Street, you think of Pleasant View, uh, and so there's a number of, number of projects. We're hoping we have enough volunteers to, to actually tackle all projects on the list, but we have prioritized those and kind of put them in a rank order. Uh, but again, that is May twenty-second, beginning at nine AM, um, we will have pretty much everything you need, uh, from gardening tools to, we're actually partnering with, uh, the Capital Area Housing Partnership, as well as South Side Community Coalition, um, and we're gonna be taking a look at Beacon South, we're gonna be taking a look at, um, some of the, some of the landscaping in, in front of some of the businesses, we're going to be looking at the town square itself, uh, some of the traffic circles and traffic islands, um, in, in the Pleasant View neighborhood. There, there's just an extensive list, uh, but pretty much everything will be provided in terms of, um, tools and resources with the exception of work gloves. Uh, we are somewhat limited in terms of work gloves, so if you'd like to be part of that, uh, and you don't want your, your hands to get calloused and, and cut up, we ask that you bring work gloves. Um, again, May twenty-second, nine AM, hope to see you there, thanks.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, so on today, which is five-one-seven day and Love Lansing Day, um, I, I also wanted to, um, extend my appreciation for all the folks out who came out this past weekend. I, I was in a number of places, I was, um, with Councilmember Hussein, and then I went out and I joined the, the Kappa's on, on West Willow for a food drive, and I swung by downtown, I mean, people were cleaning up all over the city, and it was just really great to see, um, people out there loving their city, um, making their city a better place, either cleaning up trash, planting flowers, handing out food. Um, this weekend, uh, Saturday, May twenty-second, um, eh, from between noon and two PM, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Delta Tau Omega Chapter will have a fill-the-truck, community canned and non-perishable food drive. Um, and this will be at, um, the Northwestminster Presbyterian Church on seven forty-three North Martin Luther King Boulevard here in Lansing. So, um, another opportunity, um, for folks who are struggling to get, um, canned food and non-perishable foods. And so that's from twelve to two on Saturday, March twenty-second. And again, you know, thank you, I know I saw the mayor out there, I mean, thank you to everybody who was out, um, picking up trash, planting flowers. It, it fills my heart to see, you know, folks out there doing stuff like that for the community, um, and so I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor, um, I wanted to, um, also thank all the volunteers that, that came out. I also wanted to especially thank, uh, Councilmember Adam Hussein, who, um, helped with the organization of this and his family. You know, there are very few times that I see when there's an activity going on that his family isn't out there, and, um, he, leading by example, I've seen the same thing with Councilmember Garza and his family. I mean, what better way to help, um, the younger generation understand the importance of community service? Um, the pictures of, um, Councilmember Hussein's family and his young daughters, uh, working in the dirt and planting flowers that, um, he had pictures of in front of neighborhood signs definitely show the integrity and the spirit, um, that is, um, part of, uh, who and what he does, and so I wanna, uh, I wanted to publicly thank him, um, for that, and, and again, another example has been, uh, Councilmember Garza with his, um, family out there, um, also, uh, working in, um, doing what they do together, so I appreciate it, thank you.
You're here, you're here.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Any, uh, other announcements from councilmembers, seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Spatafor, I just, uh, want to mention that as we are heading into, um, election season, um, and, uh, while things are getting better with the pandemic, uh, it is still, um, underway, so we are sending absentee ballot applications to, um, all registered voters, uh, who are, um, on the active voter list, so that's, uh, does not include, um, the folks who we have received return mail from, um, but those will be going out later this week, so, uh, watch your mailbox for an absentee ballot application, and it will, uh, be an application that can get you a ballot for both the August primary and the November general election. Um, and with that, um, we are to community event announcements, if there's anyone in the, uh, audience who has a community event, uh, please raise your hand, and we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event, um, and again, star nine, uh, on the phone, click the raise your hand icon if you have one, or alt Y on a Windows, or option Y on an Apple, uh, and it looks like we have one event announcement, and that's LaRota Stanaway.
Hello, it is the final announcement for this event, uh, this Saturday at Evergreen Cemetery, at the entrance, from ten AM to two PM. The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be for the thirteenth year, uh, distributing a hundred and twenty-five free geraniums for people to plant on loved ones' graves within the three-city cemeteries. So again, that's this Saturday from ten to two at Evergreen Cemetery, come on out, get some free flowers.
Thank you, all right, and with that, I will announce that if you wish to make public comment on legislative matters, now is the time to please, uh, begin raising your hand. Uh, the, um, legislative matters tonight does include the resolutions for action items number two through seven on the agenda, as well as the ordinance for introduction item eight. We do not have any public hearings, so just those, uh, items two through eight on the agenda, uh, so please raise your hands, uh, we will uh, accept additional raised hands, uh, through the end of the first speaker or three minutes into the public speaking. Um, so please, uh, raise your hand, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk, um, like, uh, others before me, I would like to thank everyone who showed up for the neighborhood cleanups and the neighborhood-in-bloom flower plantings on Saturday. Um, I'm not gonna duplicate what, uh, what's already been said, but I do want to list, just so everyone understands the breadth of how many people were really out in Lansing on Saturday cleaning up. We started out in the morning at about nine, uh, at Impressions Five, where the Board of Water and Light sent out something like ninety volunteers to adopt a river, and they cleaned up and beautified all along the river trail, uh, and gave away a few hundred trees, uh, after that, at ten, as you already heard, um, we met up at, uh, um, on Waverly, and two teams were sent out, uh, actually several teams were sent out, uh, all along southwest Lansing. I also agree, thank you, Councilman Hussein, for helping to organize that, uh, Councilwoman Spitzley, it was great to see you there. Um, after that, um, we had several others that were, that were going on, we had cleanups by, uh, SoCA, the Saginaw Oakland, um, folks who were over by the statue at the point, uh, cleaning up and, and planting, uh, the fence line along four ninety-six over by Saint Joe and Malcolm X were, were both cleaned. Comstock Park had several volunteers that were out there cleaning, uh, the four ninety-six underpass over by the old Home Street School. Um, we were out there for quite some time, uh, some interesting things picked up in that area, I found an old parking meter, uh, the little change thing for the parking meter. So we joked around about what is, what's the most unique thing that was found? Um, we're up in Old Town, uh, at, uh, at the park, um, at Busby Park, where they put down so much mulch, it was crazy. Um, the volunteers, they were incredible, um, I also stopped downtown where they were doing some planting around the circle, so thank you to DLI. And then ended the day at Moore's Park, where, uh, we, we did some planting around the Moore's Park sign and some cleanup over at the park. Um, it was really a, an incredible, incredible morning, um, we had so many volunteers out, and I want to thank, we had organized city employees and directors, and, uh, I saw Director Coleman, Director Kilpatrick, Director Mumbi, uh, Amber Paxton, Director Paxton, uh, Delisa Fontaine. We saw, uh, her whole, uh, Delisa's whole staff was there, Robin, Augie, uh, a whole variety of other city employees, it really was just an incredible effort. Um, so I want to thank everybody for, for making a day of cleanup, and really a day where we love Lansing. Um, on this Lansing five-one-seven day, it's just, it was an incredible effort to show the pride that we have in Lansing. We also had these cool yard signs, so, um, we should get those up on social media about, you know, don't trash our city. Um, outside of that, I want to thank, uh, our police department, we're in the Potter Walsh neighborhood with their, uh, community relations van, um, and sharing information with the, the neighbors there, it was really cool to see all the neighbors and the kids come out and talk to our, our community policing officers, so that was a great effort. Um, Councilwoman Spitzley mentioned the Kappas, they were giving out food at Willow School, hundreds and hundreds of boxes of food, the Kappas were incredible. Um, and I really appreciate that, uh, all the work that they did, they actually brought up a variety of young people from Detroit to help out, because our Kappas went down to Detroit and gave out food, and then the Detroit Kappas came up here, it really was incredible, uh, and then finally, I wanted to thank, um, the, uh, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and, or, uh, congratulate the Alpha Kappa Alpha, Alpha Sorority, uh, and their Pearls of Excellence Foundation as they celebrated and recognized the twenty-twenty-one Senior Salute Honories and Scholarship recipients, which was very cool, I tried to listen in as we were doing cleanups. Um, so just incredible things happening in Lansing over the weekend. Um, wanted to remind everybody that on May twenty-ninth, we will be doing our Memorial Day event, our annual Memorial Day event. It's, uh, we have scheduled it as a remote event where people could watch it online, um, we're gonna check and see about adjusting that to make it in person again, now that we're allowed to be outside, uh, without masks, but, uh, for now, it's virtual, we'll see if the commission, uh, wants to adjust that, but that will be at noon, um, on city TV. Um, and there's also a firefighter memorial event earlier that day, so I hope everybody will remember, um, our, our, uh, all of our veterans and those who have fallen in the line of service, um, when Memorial Day comes, and I know we won't have a council meeting before then, so I wanted to make sure to, to mention that tonight. Um, I think that's what I've got, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we are to, uh, public comment on legislative matters, and, uh, I don't see any raised hands.
Neither do I. So I'm gonna encourage you to move on.
Okay. Nobody, I guess the, the budget is too much to talk about. Okay, um, we are to the order of resolutions for action, uh, we have the confirmation of Marjorie Mallory Willis to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, so what we have before you here today is Mr. Mallory Willis. He is a former retired Lansing Fire Department, uh, retiree, also, uh, worked at State of Michigan Bureau of Fire Services, Fire Marshal Division, present day, uh, State of Michigan Certified Inspector, uh, State of Michigan Arson Inspector, Life Safety National Surveyor, this guy is, uh, more than qualified. Uh, we vetted him through the committee, and, um, and at this point, I would like to move the resolution.
Thank you, it's proper motions or further discussion on the resolution appointing Mallory Willis? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the, uh, appointment is confirmed, and we are to a Spanish show cause hearing for fourteen twelve West Ionia.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, so fourteen twelve West Ionia Street, it was a original red tag date of March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, submitted in this make, save, or demolish process of January twenty-eight, twenty twenty. Uh, let's see, the SEV value on this property is twenty-eight thousand two hundred, uh, estimated, estimate cost of repairs is a hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, code compliance inspection date was March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, code compliance letter written at March fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, see here. Owner does have an issued mechanical permit as of two, one, twenty twenty-one, has had no inspections or activity, owner was notified and did not attend the last demolition board meeting, uh, owner stated he foreclosed on, uh, I'm not gonna say her name, to date, this information has yet to be recorded with a city assessor, so at this point in time, I will move the resolution.
Thank you, that is proper motion, is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I asked for all call vote on setting the show cause hearing for the order to make safe, demolish fourteen twelve West Ionia Street.
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the show cause hearing is set, and that takes us to setting a hearing for twenty-one oh nine Warden.
Councilmember Garza.
Oh, thank you, Council President, okay, so what we have here is twenty-one zero nine Warden Street, uh, code compliance inspection date was eleven thirty, two thousand and eighteen, code compliance letter written, eleven thirty, two thousand and eighteen, uh, the demolition board shows cause hearings was nine twenty-sixth of nineteen and twelve five of nineteen. Ordered by a demolition board is make, save, or demolish on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Let's see here. It looks like the SEV is forty-two thousand three hundred, the estimate cost of repairs is seventy-nine thousand nine hundred, and at this time, I'd move the resolution.
Oh, I did it, it's a proper motion, is there any further discussion on the, uh, resolution? Seeing none, I asked the clerk to please call the roll on the show cause, setting show cause hearing for twenty-one oh nine Warden.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the show cause hearing is set, and that takes us to the polling place relocation for precincts nineteen and twenty.
Sure, um, so I'm actually gonna give this to the clerk, I, I, I agreed to introduce this, um, um, because it was quite urgent, but, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you please explain the resolution, I'd be appreciative.
Certainly, um, the, uh, Walter North School on the south end of town is undergoing construction, and the school district, um, does not believe they can make it available for either the August or November election. Uh, so what this resolution would do is move those, both of those precincts to Gardner School, where, uh, we also already have a couple of other precincts um, for, uh, for these, um, upcoming elections, um, and, um, next year, we'll be doing total redistricting because of the census and redrawning of boundaries, so, uh, it just kind of leaves them hanging as to where they'll be next year, because we don't know what our, our map will look like, so it just handles this year, which is the essential part, is to, uh, give the voters a, a place to vote.
Right, uh, Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna hand you the gavel. And I will make the motion to approve the resolution, moving the, uh, polling place for Ward Two Precinct nineteen and Ward Two Precinct twenty to Gardner.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion, we do have Councilwoman Wood, go ahead.
If the clerk could explain how they're going to notify the voters in those precincts?
Uh, we will mail a notification to every individual voter, uh, we will also have signs at, uh, at the building on Election Day when it's closed, so they'll have directions on where they should go, uh, but the primary, uh, resource will be, um, a direct mail to every registered voter who's registered in those two precincts. Uh, we also, we have built quite an email list, so we will also do an email to anyone whose email address we have that's impacted.
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, clerk Swol, would you please take the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution is adopted, relocating the precincts, and that takes us to the noise special for the North Grand River Avenue.
Yes, um, that one, Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, so this, uh, this is pretty simple, uh, we have some combined sewer overflow and, um, truck sewer, uh, project work that needs to be done. The state, my understanding is them that has a, uh, road resurfacing project slated for early two thousand and twenty-two, so we actually have to get this work, uh, done before that. Our contractor, Hoffman Brothers, Inc., um, is actually requesting, um, this noise permit so that they can work, uh, on Saturdays, there's some work that, um, it's, it's abnormally deep, and because of that, we, we see this a lot in city operations, um, there, there's gonna be some foreclosure of, uh, traffic, um, in the project area, so, again, to, to try to mitigate, you know, kind of the time that has to be shut down, but also to get this thing prepared, uh, for the state's work, um, this, uh, this waiver has been requested. Uh, we did have a public hearing on May tenth, um, we didn't receive any verbal or written, written objections, as I understand it, uh, and then we actually had, uh, Mr. Alec Mavitas, I believe it is, I'm sorry if I slotted your last name, uh, in from Public Services, uh, today to Committee of the Whole, talked about, um, the fact that a couple, um, residents didn't make verbal comment, um, about their support, uh, for this, but they didn't, uh, actually attend the public hearing, uh, but they are, uh, in full support. Uh, and then the other piece is that, um, Public Services has reached out to residents in the area to inquire, inquire about physical disabilities, um, related accommodations, they're gonna kind of work those issues case by, uh, the case-by-case scenario. Um, this came from Committee of the Whole, that's why I'm reporting on it, not City Operations, um, due to timeliness, uh, in the waiver, although it says, I think it says, May eighth is actually from May twenty-second to October thirtieth, so with that being said, I would move the, uh, resolution.
Is a proper motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, on the noise waiver, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the noise waiver is approved, and that takes us to, uh, the big enchilada for the night, the fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two budget for the city of Lansing.
Said, no one told me there'd be enchiladas, um, so with that, we will call on Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so we've been working this for, for quite some time, we actually, um, were presented this, uh, by the administration on March twenty-second. We've had a number of meetings over the past couple of months, we've had neighborhood meetings, we even had a meeting on, uh, Saturday morning, um, and we had a, a public hearing. Uh, per the charter, we have until the third Monday of May, uh, to approve this thing, and then that brings us to tonight's, uh, consideration. The proposed, um, all-fund budget for the city, uh, this year is two hundred and thirty-seven point one million dollars, proposed general fund budget is a hundred and fifty-one, I think I have those numbers right, point two million dollars. Um, there's a number of key investments, uh, we have some of public safety, as an example, uh, an additional social worker, uh, we have some key investments in infrastructure and equipment, uh, as an example, two point seven five million for major streets and bridge work, one point eight four five million for local street repairs, and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from sidewalks, um, we have One point eight four five million for local street repairs and two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from sidewalks. Um, we have, uh, some some major investments in neighborhoods and economic development. Um, as an example, we're reinstating the money for the hundred and seventy five thousand dollar small business facade grant, uh, program, uh, and then there's some some racial justice and equity dollars. Um, we did take this up in committee of the whole tonight and there were a a number of amendments to the policies and to the budget itself, uh, from Councilman Spatafor. Uh, we did approve an amendment, uh, moving twenty thousand dollars from Sister Cities, uh, to the Office of City Attorney for Quarterly Expungement Clinics, uh, from Patricia Spitzley. Uh, there was some budget, uh, policy language pertaining to ways and means of public safety, working with, uh, the internal auditor, uh, to seek out funding for a cold case unit expansion in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. Uh, it's expected that a report from these committees will, uh, be due before council priorities are sent to the mayor, um, so that he or she can prepare the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. Uh, and and it was discussed to a committee of the whole, uh, Councilwoman Spitzley, who brought this, she does believe, uh, that the the number might be close to two hundred and fifty thousand, but again, we like a deeper study, uh, and a report to help guide the creation of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. And then from Councilwoman Wood, um, she, uh, brought an amendment that deals with the racist racial injustice plan, sorry. Uh, what this does is, at least my understanding is, track three hundred thousand dollars from the H R C S operation line and inserts it into, and I'm not gonna call it a control account, into a non-departmental contingency account. Um, and no expenditures are to be approved from this account, uh, until the plan is presented by the administration of the council and the council, uh, approves. And this was, uh, something that Councilwoman Wood and Mayor Shore actually worked on together. Uh, the goal here is that we are doing something substantive, uh, with this money that actually moves kind of the ball down the field, uh, regarding H racial justice and equity and that there's some, um, public input, uh, as we move forward. So with that said, um, and if there's anything you need to correct, President Spatafor, feel free. But with that said, I would move the, um, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Okay, well, that, um, is there, thank you, Councilmember Hussein, very thorough. Um, is there comments from any other council members? Uh, Councilmember Wood.
Um, I would move to divide the question at the appropriate time.
Very good. Councilmember Wood has requested a division of the question, pulling out the H R C S budget. Why don't we take a motion on that first to divide the question? Um, Councilmember Jackson, we'll come back to you on, I said, thank you, uh, um. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the division of the question?
Division, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Eight A zero nays, the division is ordered.
Thank you. A Councilmember Wood, we will first vote on the remainder of the budget and then when we get to the H R C S budget, I'll call for a, a motion of recusal.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jackson to the main question.
Thank you, yes. Um, so I know we had our committee of the whole and my amendment failed, but I, of course, would not stop me from trying again in the regular council, so just take two minutes and then I'll move an amendment. So basically, our Lansing Police Department has six unfilled police officer positions along with the sergeant and detective and some other positions. I would, the intent of this amendment is to use one of those vacant police officers and move the funding to allow for an additional social worker. The social worker salary has two twenty two thousand and fifteen dollars extra more than the vacant police officer position. So what I would propose is to move twenty two thousand fifteen dollars from the police operating budget into the police personnel budget, which is the equivalent of the vacant position plus the extra to make the social worker position in hopes that the administration would use that, um, new, to use that money correlation since it will line up to fund a social worker in place of one of the vacant police officers that has been vacant for over a year. And I understand that to move this mere twenty two thousand fifteen dollars would be non-binding for the administration and the police chief to actually turn it to a social worker, but since everybody is here, um, and I believe we all want to see the work of social workers who help with housing insecurity, food insecurity and health and well-being insecurity and ultimately could reduce, um, crime at the cause, which is often insecurities. I would move that we switch twenty two thousand fifteen dollars from the police operating budget to the police personnel budget for the reason that the administration can assign a an additional social worker in place of a vacant officer who is not on the force right now because they're vacant and we can't fill all of our police officer positions. So I would move that amendment.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Councilmember Jackson, for, uh, bringing this forward again. Um, I I I have a question for you. Have you spoken to the administration about this since we talked in committee of the whole and are they supportive of adding another social worker uh, with this additional twenty two thousand and fifteen dollars?
Sure, so I have not spoke to the administration, um, since our meeting. The brief conversation I had was basically, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically the administration is not supportive of reducing the number of funded police officer positions because they want to try to front load those positions in case people retire in the future and that the administration likes social workers, but not in the case of switching, uh, funded vacant police officer position to it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, I guess, uh, Mayor Shore, if you got twenty two thousand and fifteen dollars uh, from operating to, um, personnel, would you hire a social worker with that money or what would you do with that?
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, it is not my intention to reduce a position, so, um, we have two hundred and six badged officers and, um, it's my intention to fill those and unless somebody wants to increase, I'm, we have proposed adding a second social worker in L P D and I think there's support for that. Uh, to add a third would either require enough to fund that third position or, um, but it would require enough to fund that third position. It's not my intention to reduce the police officers. It's my intention to fill those vacancies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Jackson. I appreciate the discussion.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, can we have our city attorney, as he did during committee of the whole, weigh in on what the council's authority is for, um, designating funds?
No, I've heard this already. Um, I think.
I I I, and I know you have, but it, but if if we're going back through it again and we're here in council, I mean, do you understand why I've, I'm asking the question?
Not particularly, but is Jim on?
Yes, but I'm not live, I don't think. Am I? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't ever wanna say that. Can you hear me? Um, so. So. So, uh, some background, we, uh, we're a strong mayor form of government. We have a charter. Charter breaks up the responsibilities of council um, for legislation and the mayor for administration. Uh, that's different than other cities that might have different rules regarding the involvement of council. But this is what we have here in Lansing. What, uh, what governs the budget is the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act. And that act provides that, uh, a city, a municipality must adopt a chart of accounts. And Lansing, back somewhere, adopted approved accounts that breeze basically break up the accounts in the departments to operating accounts and personnel accounts. The job of council is to appropriate money to those accounts. So to go further and then direct the mayor what to do with that money, uh, except maybe try to comply with your policies, uh, would not be permissible. So you you either have to remove money from one account and add it to another and then it's going to be up to the administration to decide how to use that money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that satisfy your inquiry, Councilmember Spitzley?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I mean, it's clear right now that the 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 mayor doesn't want to reduce the number of officers. We have six vacancies and we've had six vacancies for a while. Um, the the issue now, though, Councilmember Jackson, is knowing that that's not gonna happen. The only the only other option that we have is to remove the value of an officer position from the police budget and put it somewhere else. Like if you, if you truly want to have an influence over that number of officers, knowing we're not gonna get that other social worker out of this deal, um, if the goal is to start, um, moving funding from back end enforcement to front end mitigation, um, that is another option.
Sure, and my last comment, if I may, hopefully my last comment. So I understand we wouldn't be bound, but this mere twenty two thousand shift is kind of a precursor in good faith to see what, if anything, we can work on when it relates to reimagining police. I think for the most part, people agree that social workers are a good thing that could ultimately deal with the root causes of crime more so, I would say, than an officer, especially a vacant officer who is not actually on the streets, which we have several of and have had several of for some time. So I guess in good faith, I'm still gonna make this motion to see if council or if the administration is willing to, um, I don't know, change that, um, the personnel slightly to possibly get a greater impact for where everything is budgeted now because we have the funding there, but not the officer. So let's keep the funding, but put a social worker who ideally will be hired and start helping people right away. And again, it's it's good faith, it's twenty two thousand dollar switch. It wouldn't take officers from the street because we don't have them there in the first place and it's just a way to, um, basically spend wisely in our police department because the budget goes up and that's just what happens and we have to monitor it or else what, it'll just keep going up and up. And I think that this is a good way to accomplish some of the goals of reimagining with, um, more holistic approach rather than, I guess, vacant officers trying to get hired on the street approach.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts.
Councilmember Jackson, I am wholly supportive of introducing more social workers to the police department or to the fire department or whatever we wanna talk about. My concern and why I'm gonna be voting no on this is because this is moving money from operations to personnel where mayor has specifically said that he is not gonna hire a social worker. So then the other option, which was mentioned in Cow, is that this money could just go over to overtime pay for current cops. It's like, I mean, I appreciate the, what you're talking about here and how you're doing this, it's just that's not going to be what happens and that's what I'm a little bit concerned about. So I I think all I'm saying here is that I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment? Sorry.
On the Jackson amendment, Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Uh, one yay, seven nays, the amendment is not adopted.
All right, so what we have before us, uh, to wrap up discussion is the final, uh, vote on the budget minus the H R C S budget. Um, I just, real quick, I haven't said a lot on this, but I do wanna just say I'm proud to cast my vote in favor of the fiscal year twenty-two budget. It is a one hundred and fifty one point two million dollar general fund budget. That's a ten percent increase from our projected F Y twenty-one budget. A lot of that is due in large part thanks to the American Rescue Plan and the support the city received for our COVID nineteen response. We do add a social worker, as the vice president mentioned, out a FOIA analyst in the police department to provide additional transparency. And I also am really intrigued by this partnership the mayor's proposed and we're funding, uh, for the addition of Ingham County Community Health Workers to work with our fire dispatchers to ensure that non-emergency calls go towards social services. The vice president mentioned huge investments in ma- major street and bridge work, local street repairs and sidewalks as well as the, um, addition of four point four million dollars to our fund balance, bringing our fund balance up to, uh, compliance with ordinances and policies. I wanna thank this council. The spending plan includes the amendment I proposed to fund quarterly expenditure clinics through the Office of City Attorney. And also the work that we've done has been, uh, very diligent. And I wanna thank our staff, including the internal auditor, for helping shepherd our priorities to the finish line and the public, of course, for their input and feedback. And with that, I would ask that the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero nays, the, um, the H R C S portion of the budget is.
Thank you. Uh, now the next item we will call for a vote on is the H R C S budget. Mr. Vice President.
Uh, so moved.
Very good, and now I need a motion to recuse Councilmember Wood.
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Council Vice President Hussein. Um, as many of you are aware, Councilmember Wood works for R S V P, which does receive, um, a grant from the H R C S, uh, budget and has requested a recusal. Um, with that, I would call a roll call vote on recusing Councilmember Wood.
Recusal, Councilmember Dunbar.
Councilmember Wood.
Nope, he's calling Dunbar.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Sorry about that. My bad.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Danny.
Councilmember Rose. Uh, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
And if I correct that Councilmember Wood does not have a vote on it.
Correct, yes.
I was wrong half the time, okay? Uh, seven eight zero days, uh, the recusal is ordered.
Very good. Uh, the H R C S budget is before us with a proper motion. Any further discussion? All right, would the clerk please call the roll, uh, excluding Councilmember Wood?
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven A's, zero nays, the H R C S portion of the budget is adopted.
Very good. That concludes our action on the budget. Thank you all very much, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, that takes us to, um, the introduction of ordinances. Councilmember Garza introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending chapter sixteen ten uniform fire code and uniform fire code standards. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Very good, Councilmember Garza.
Okay, well, you you said it, what I was gonna say, but, so the city of Lansing Fire Department Fire Prevention Office has been operating under the International Fire Code. has been operating under the International Fire Code of two thousand and nine uh, since its adoption in two thousand and eleven. And so the adoption of this International Fire Code two thousand and eighteen will allow the city Lansing Fire Department Fire Prevention Office to maintain the most up-to-date codes for safety of our firefighters, businesses and public. And with that, I will move to set the public hearing in consideration of the ordinance, and that would be June seventh, I believe.
Yes. All right, that is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? All right, uh, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, council member Hussein.
Yes.
Council member Jackson.
Yes.
Council member Spatafor.
Yes.
Council member Spitzley.
Yes.
Council member Wood.
Yes.
Council member Betts.
Yes.
Council member Dunbar.
Yes.
Council member Garza.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the public hearing is set for June seventh. And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. Once again, uh, if you wish to address the city council on any item relative to the governance or operation of the city, please raise your hands, uh, star nine on a phone. Um, the raised hand icon on uh, many apps uh, or um, on a Windows computer, on a Apple computer, option wide. Uh, we pulled it, raised hands until uh, the first speaker is done speaking or at least three minutes into the speaking. Uh, and uh, as folks are raising their hand, we are to report some city officer reports and questions.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move that. Uh, all items be uh, considered as read and full, and the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
It's a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Other referrals, council member Jackson.
Yes.
Council member Spatafor.
Yes.
Council member Wood.
Yes.
Council member Betts.
Yes.
Council member Dunbar.
Yes.
Council member Garza.
Yes.
Council member Hussein.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the referrals are ordered. We uh, items from the city clerk, the general funds status report for the third quarter.
Play uh, committee of the whole.
Uh, minutes of boards and commissions.
Play some file.
Uh, the polling place resolution that was handled earlier.
Play some file.
The bond ranking update for the sewer enterprise.
Uh, committee of the whole.
And a fireworks display license for the Independence Day celebration.
Uh, so, someone on the attendees list will be happy to hear we're reporting that to city operations.
Okay, uh, I was from the mayor. We have a grant acceptance for CDBG home and ESG grants.
Ways and Means.
Uh, we have Act two of twenty-two one, uh, vacates North Eighth Street right of way.
That is going to be the Development and Planning Committee.
And support of updating Part one fifteen of Michigan's of waste law.
City Operations.
And communications and petitions. We have a notice from Liquor Control of Dave and Sons to uh, request a transfer of an STD and SDM license.
This uh, city operations committee.
And we are too remarked by councilmen.
Uh, any council member remarks? Well, I just wanted to let you all know I received word that our uh, social district permits were approved by Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and the licensed establishments are working on those applications now. So uh, someday we shall all get together um, and enjoy the social districts. So there you go. That's all I got for you. Any other council members? Seeing none, nope, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody. Um, another budget in the books. Um, I would like to thank um, Jake Brower, who's our, our budget director, and Rob Whitigan, who's our finance director, and all of our uh, department heads. They work really hard with our finance department. I know they're getting you all a lot of information. Uh, you have very good questions and, and they've been able to provide those answers. Um, I do want to thank all council members. Um, we've worked very well once again for the, the fourth year on this budget and I'm excited to see the progress that we're making here. Uh, our priorities are shown through our budget. So I'm not going to go through all the different pieces of it because the vice, Mr. Vice President, upon introducing it, read up pretty much everything I was going to say, and then I think Council President Spatafor finished it off with his comments. So um, I do appreciate all the hard work that's put into this every year. Um, and this year was especially tough. Uh, like President Spatafor, I want to thank the federal government for helping out also. Um, but uh, but thank you all for all the hard work you put in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are to public comment, and I see no raised hands.
Me, me neither, and I know we said three minutes in, but I think we satisfied the requirement for public comment. Unless the city attorney wants to report from wherever his lovely background is that we have to sit here longer.
I don't, I just text some of the people in my office. I have never seen a meeting where there's been no public comment.
I booked us here till.
Actually, when a budget is uh, approved, that's, that's a first.
All right, Mr. Clerk. Well, we're going to call that close of public comment and, and move on then to adjournment, I suppose. All right, so uh, Lansing City Council at seven fifty-six on May seventeenth. We are adjourned for three weeks, people. We've earned it. Have a good day.